Okay, we'll call the meeting to order of March 5th, 2012 with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up, to open a hearing on an ordinance establishing the Director of Emergency Management Ordinance, well, actually, having an ordinance that establishes the emergency management official.
I just made like.
Nothing's changed since we went over the hearing, right?
I don't think so.
No, no, saying changes.
No material changes.
I just have two things I'd like to bring up. Number one, what I don't see in the audience, what I don't see in the ordinance is, what do we do if there's a temporary vacancy such as now, or a vacancy in the office, and that doesn't seem to be addressed, how that is filled, I don't believe. And the other thing is, concerning to keep this as a part-time job, that it's not going to grow into like a full-time job for somebody. Obviously, I think you need somebody in the position that's going to spend some time, but right now, it's certainly not a part-time, not a full-time position. Those are the only thoughts that cross my mind.
Well, with respect to the first one, that would be up to Bill, because what you're doing by this ordinance is giving Bill the authority to hire and manage that position. And with respect to the keeping it part-time, you've got Bill, who's going to be dealing with that issue, and you also, you control the budget. So that's the best way to control what happens.
This is observation.
Barbara, I had a question in number two, this is for you, Bill. There is equipping, maintaining, and staffing an emergency operations center as an on, on an as-needed basis. How is that going to be accomplished, since he has no budget?
Well, he has equipment that the EMA office has obtained through grants from state EMA, and they provide him with, you know, certain communications equipment and computer laptops, a lot of technological equipment where he stores it, so.
But then how will he staff?
When there's a hurricane or some type of natural emergency, the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, opens in the conference room with the police station, and he's responsible for staffing and maintaining and equipping that EOC.
Wait, how is he staffing it? Does he tell the, no, no, does he have to tell the police, I need this? He has no staff, so how does he organize the staffing? Is it through you and through the police department? I'm just asking how he staffs it, because.
He is the staff.
Well, he is the staff, but, you know, you need help when an emergency.
It was already done, and you were there.
Yeah, we did that when we went through the flood.
And how did you staff?
He said it was the police officers.
Okay.
So the command center was set up in the room next to the police station. And the, he had got all his information there. And there was a number of officers stationed throughout town, and they were in constant control, contact with him, hey, this bridge is going to be out.
Public works, too.
And public, yes, public works was also. So basically, a town employees become the staff.
Great, okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to clarify. So his staff becomes the public work, so he would organize public works through Tim Teft, and he'd organize the police through Chief Palmer.
Right, he would have a member of like DPW there, a member of the police department there, perhaps a member of the fire departments, so everything would be pretty coordinated. When we needed people to go to a certain location, he would go to like, you know, the police office and say, make sure you have police office here, because there's a line down and so forth, so. I mean, he would, I think Tom did it pretty well, he would staff it with town employees.
That's what I wanted to say in public, and make sure we were clear.
You also?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Tom?
The other question to address Scott's thing about becoming full-time, he does not get an hourly wage. It's a stipend. So until you change that, there is no.
No, but I was just thinking somebody could get in that position, so you really need somebody full-time.
Now, without the council changing the money, from a stipend to an hourly wage.
You know.
Any other questions?
Something we need, I definitely think so.
Probably have to abide by state laws, so.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Oh, wait a minute.
Sorry.
That's all right, before you do that, is there anyone from the public that wants to be heard on this matter? Okay.
All right, motion to close the hearing and set the date to establish an ordinance direct, establish an ordinance to establish a Director of Emergency Management.
And we could do it the next council meeting, because it'll be a very simple.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa.
The next council meeting is in 18.
Okay, that's fine. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda.
Yeah, I want to pull the minutes of February 6th, and I don't want to press them here. There is, I can review these this afternoon, but one thing that concerns me.
Okay, wait, so we're going to pull February 6th, or is anything anyone else wanted to pull?
13.
The 13th, okay. And any other notes?
Listen to approve the workshop notes of February 23rd, 2012, workshop notes of February 29th, 2012, and accept the report from the Chief of Police.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back to February 6th now.
Okay, on, read these this afternoon, yeah, I noticed on page nine, now, I might have said this, and Lisa hasn't in the minutes, I did say it, but it's something I don't believe in, so.
What paragraph?
It's just for page nine, it's for at the bottom.
Starts with Counselor Hurst.
Counselor Hurst noted often it was.
Wait a minute.
Is that in order?
What? February 6th, 9.
February 6th, page 9.
Oh, I'm looking at Barbara's page, I don't want to look at that, okay, I got to go back to February 6th, all right, let me catch up, just a second.
Okay.
All right, I got you.
Eight lines up from the bottom.
Let's see, that's not the one. Okay, I'm saving, page 15 is the one I'm really concerned about.
On February 6th?
Yes, and it says here.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, let us get there.
How many lines?
All right, page 15, got it.
First full paragraph, it says, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth line says, Counselor Hurst felt Hopkins had put forth a consistent effort to achieve the 10 percent affordability goal. He felt there should be legislation submitted to change the percentage to 20 percent. And obviously, I don't even believe that, so, but I know Lisa has it in her minutes that I said that, and I just want to hear the tape of that, whether I really said that, because I think we're around 8 percent. And I think probably the mistake was, I meant that, you know, we need 2 percent, or 20 percent more. I just want to hear if I goofed, and we all make slip-ups, but I want to hear that.
Well, you could put a correct, make a correction in our minutes from tonight.
Yeah, 2 percent.
But I don't know what I said exactly.
Then you'll have to go back to the recording and check it, which would be a good idea. Would you like to do that?
Yes, I would.
Good, and we won't approve these minutes until you have a chance to do that.
The other thing is, I know when Bill, on page 14, on the Town Management Book, he did not mention me as attending that, and I think I spoke, and I said, I made my own note that I attended. I think Lisa said she noted that earlier.
I'm sorry, attended what?
The annual meeting of the League of Cities and Towns.
Lisa doesn't, you know, put in every single thought, I mean, everything doesn't go.
But whatever, I do want to, maybe I'm being picky, but I did go, I know, I believe Counselor Landau planned to go, but I did attend, in fact, it was the first time I attended. But I do want to hear that other thing, because I don't even believe it, and I could have goofed and said it, because we say things that.
Okay, so you'll check and find that out, so we won't approve the February 6th minute and hold on those. Were there any other changes while we're on them?
There were some changes by Counselor Capable, called me about today.
Right, I see those. Is there anything else? Okay, all right, we'll hold on those. Let's see, February 13 minutes, yeah, there was a problem there, I don't know if you folks heard what the problem was. There were a number of things that weren't added that night, because Lori told me that the machine, the tape recording broke, because I remember specifically toward the end of the meeting, you had noted, I want to make sure the record has the following, and I said, did you have that? And Lori didn't. So I was going to suggest that we.
Those were for other minutes, so not for the 13th.
Oh, it wasn't the 13th?
No, it was the one, just the last time.
It was the last workshops, but did you?
But I haven't talked to her about it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just was looking at these minutes.
All right, go ahead, Barbara.
I don't have anything, it was Frank.
Frank, go ahead.
No, you know, I mistake, I misspoke, 23rd is what I had questions on, not the 13th.
Okay. We approved those. Were they minor little, little things?
I'm sorry, I guess I.
Let's go to it.
Yeah.
What page do you have?
Let's see, 23rd, looks like the very first page. Animal Control, last sentence, for a cost of 18.6 for health, it's really 19.087, so.
That's with the addition of the dental, and I think she went up as a family plan on health, but she already had dental.
Well, yeah, but it's not 18.6, it's more than that, I think, isn't it?
Oh, no, it's 18.6, and then it's 19 odd when you add the dental, is my understanding, but again, remember, all the health cares are somewhat different.
Yeah.
But I thought it was 18.6 for family, and she just changed that, but she had already had dental.
Anything else, Frank?
Just right, right below, EMA Public Welfare Director, third sentence from the bottom, the stipend was cut to 250 for the present budget, I thought it was 100.
No, no, I think it was 250.
Was it 250, okay.
We don't have to pass, if you want to check that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll check. I don't think I have it in here.
So let me make a motion to pass the workshop notes of February 13th, 2012.
Yes, is there a second to pass?
Second.
Okay, all right, we're voting on February 13th.
One page back.
All right, you guys, we're voting on accepting the workshop notes of February 13th. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll, we'll just hold on the February 6th minutes. Okay, first public forum, is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, Council President's Report. You had a letter in your pack, let's see, just the first one off, the budget, you had a letter in your packet, and that could be, the plan was to bring this to the hearing tomorrow night, the budget hearing, at Cherahoe at the middle school. And I just wanted you to know that the copy I handed out tonight had two changes. The second paragraph was added of the new copy, that's, that's a new paragraph, where it says, even with no increase in the municipal portion, that's new. And then on the second page, there were a couple of changes on the, the paragraph that begins, now that you have made reductions, I just added in a couple of things, as you could see. And there's a new paragraph, the second one from the bottom, other areas of interest are the staff vacancies and the budget, that's a new section. But briefly, all this is, is to make some suggestions to the school committee, and point out, first of all, that the, even, let's see, with no increase to the municipal portion of our budget, the townspeople are facing a tax increase close to the 4 percent cap, and that is entirely due to their 54.729 million spending proposal. And the other item is what we had discussed previously about the idea of asking them to only, if they have to have, have an increase in their budget, and if it is going to affect in close to our 4 percent cap, that they do their very best not to exceed 75 percent of that 4 percent cap. So ask them to do that sort of math for each town, and then we provided an example here that would show them the amount of money that they would need to cut, and the impact it would have on the three towns. And then to ask them, down at the bottom of the page, that they have increases in their certified and support staff, and they also have increases for vacancies, even vacant positions, where they had put in from 1 to 1 and 1/2 percent increase. That would add up for certified staff if they would cut that, because they're in negotiations for both. We're asking them to negotiate a financially neutral contract. If they take that out of their budget, why would you want staff to know that you might do that? But that would be 250,000 if they would decrease that to zero, and the support staff total came up to approximately 30,000. The other item was just to let them know that, as we all knew, that at the omnibus meeting, when we were told that the Chair of Finance Committee recommended keeping 3 percent of their fund balance, that the main reason by some of the members, I don't know if it was unanimous, was to, rather than have them take the easy out and use the fund balance to decrease the bottom line, to instead say, we'll keep it at 3, and then encourage, in that way encourages the school committee to cut expenses, that was, what that was all about. And then I put in here that we were asking them to, if the amount left in their fund balance, I believe, to take it to 2, would be 410,000, to ask them to then use that money, or whatever amount it is, to get it down to 2 percent, that they use that amount to put toward their capital budget, have they, as they have in the past, or whatever area, but capital budget is usually where they put it. So those amounts add up to 690,000. And the last area I had down was why, to ask a question, why they would have, they have, in the back of the budget, they had all the vacancies listed, and they had the name of the person, I guess, that retired or left or whatever, and they put the step, so you could see, but those positions that were vacant, they had budgeted 1 to 1 and 1/2 percent.
At top rate.
Yeah, at that higher rate, so they actually put an increase for a vacancy, and the question is, are these people starting July 1, and why would they start at the top wage? So it was just an area that we'd like them to look at, so they could take that out of the budget. And I guess that was primarily it, so I wanted to ask you, how you, if there were other areas that you wanted to add into this for tomorrow night, if there's anything else you came up with.
Yeah, one thing, first of all, I want to make a motion endorse this, my only comments, and you might have different numbers, but I know Richmond spends 81, 82 percent of its town budget on schools, I think Charleston was 67, I don't know what that current number is, and we're 75. Let me ask you the question, the latest thing in their budget, did they delete the management study that I have an obsession about?
Yes, they did, last I heard.
Well, I believe firmly, and I asked you to indulge me, to put in the management study. The logic being is that you cannot save money over, over long-term unless you, and I mean an outside management study, too, that could conceivably save hundreds of thousands of dollars, and people who compare numerous school districts and see how they operate. We have school districts where children extremely excel, they don't spend the amount of money that we do, even in urban areas where the children have a lot of strikes against them. But I believe that the long-term solution is an outside look at the running of the schools, and everybody can look at it, council people can look at, school committee people, but you cannot have something that important as an inside job. I believe, and I would ask you to include that, that the school committee reflect on an outside management study, including labor costs. Labor costs drive budgets, are the biggest component of our local budgets, and if we're not, if we're going to be serious, and hopefully have an element of professionalism, that we really have to look at that. So, I mean, I would ask the council, would they be willing to include that, that a budget that includes an outside management study to at least include labor costs?
Anything else?
That's, that's all I have.
Tom?
Actually, I'm not in favor of adding that to this letter. This letter is about cutting their budget. Your proposal is adding money to the budget.
Not necessarily.
It's going to cost over $100,000.
Well, let's let Tom finish.
To do that management study. I went to the school committee meetings when they talked about it, that was the price, 100 to 110,000, I think it came back, and that's why they decided not to do it. My question on the letter, Sylvia, are you going to read this to them tomorrow?
Yes.
In the record? Okay, with that, and the way you've got it written, because we can still have discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter with the changes to be issued to the school committee at tomorrow night's financial meeting.
Well, you want to wait until the.
Well, I'll second it, it's a motion.
Okay.
Do you consult discussion?
Sure, okay.
Can I go to my car, because I got to get the email I sent to Amanda.
Sure, go ahead, we'll be right, we'll, we'll wait till you get back. We're going to wait till he comes back.
Okay.
You want to call Trump?
Chief, you did a good job Saturday night.
Thank you. It was a fun time.
You're quite the comedian, aren't you?
My wife doesn't think so.
You're going to, you're going to read this to them.
Yes, remember, we did it before.
No, I know, it's a good idea, I just want to make sure. You're going to read it, I'm planning on being there, are you?
What time does it start? 7?
7.
If I can get done with the stuff in the Sugar House, I will be there.
7, and Scott, are you going tomorrow night?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And I'm giving up the get-together the Republicans have upstate, to be there, so I'll be at Cherahoe tomorrow. If I want to be white guy, I say that's a sacrifice on me, you know.
Well, it is.
Because Super Tuesday, Super Tuesdays tomorrow night.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara? I just have, I agree with Tom, is that this letter is how to cut money, not spend money. One of the other areas that I know that they have added money to, which I actually support, which is getting more technological gear to the students. However, I know that the federal government is also looking at putting in input and influx of money specifically for technological pieces, iPads, iPods, whatever those things are. So I'm not sure if they shouldn't, you know, at least reduce it this year to see if there are actually going to be grants that are given to cover it, rather than, you know, at least reduce it to some extent, because that is a very strong portion of the education budget in the, with the federal government, and they're considering giving these big grants to the schools, to the states and then to the schools, specifically for technological, tech, whatever they are, computers, but like handheld ones, but maybe they could reduce that part of the budget temporarily, to see if that grant funding comes through.
All right, well, I've got this written down, you can let me know if this is something you want to add, or you want it to come up from counselors, because it's like your management study.
I could do that.
Yeah, because you're not going to, we're not, we're going to add it to the letter, you still can stand up and say, and by the way.
I really want.
Yeah, I can, I can, because I think of that, too. Right, I could do that as well, because then we're not messing up with the letter.
But there's a logical reason.
Oh, well, wait, so, oh, well, go ahead, Scott, or should I send it to you first, and then we'll go back to Scott?
Hello.
I don't want to.
Anyway, I sent Amanda Blau from the school committee an email on February 14th, and a couple of things that I, I wanted to mention to her, to mention when she was in the process of these negotiations, one of them being the capital improvements, they, I think they were asking for about $1,007,000 in capital improvements, on top of what, 25 million they spent on the capital, on the campus project. So my thoughts were to her, were, you know, some things that aren't high priorities, can we, you know, maybe push them off? The other big thing, which includes the Hope Valley Heating System, was to really pursue, and I'm not quite sure, I didn't really get from Amanda whether this was being pursued or not, was, anything, at that omnibus meeting, they mentioned, anything that's health and safety related, could possibly be reimbursed 60 percent by the state. I'd like to know if anything in that capital projects were being pursued for that.
They are, actually.
Yeah, they are.
They are absolutely doing that.
Right, but what?
They're pursuing it for the 60-some percent.
What part of it, though, all of it, or?
Anything on the, on the heating system for the school.
The heating system was something.
Yeah, they are doing.
But I'd like to know firmly, you know, has letters been sent, you know, if we can be copying, I mean, I don't know, something, I just want something to be, and then the, so it was really just that capital improvements, and then the other thing that, that was mentioned at the omnibus meeting, which kind of caught my ear, was, some of the debt service that they have, was attractive, at least from Brian Stanley's perspective, the rates were low, so they chose short-term maturities. Now, I think if we, if he was able to look at maybe refinancing some of that just a little bit longer, the rates are a little bit higher, but it might increase the cash flow with the school department, and then also may, may it'll have a trickle-down effect to us as towns. So that was the other thing, to maybe look at, to maybe refinance some of those debt, that debt service that he mentioned that he, he has on the books currently. So that was my thoughts to Amanda. She never responded, so.
Sylvia had just said that there are things, because tomorrow it's at 7 o'clock, and I know a number of us were all going, but I know if Tom can do it, but it might be something to bring up.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know, if you, if you don't want to include it, that's fine, I just figured I'd mention it, this is what I had sent to Amanda, and if you think it's valid, great, if not, then that's fine, too.
Everything to get them to reduce the budget is valid.
But it's also good, you know, if people start fading off, if the letter is too long, so Sylvia's is pretty concise, and then if, I certainly can mention techn, the technological things, I'd like them to at least temporarily cut, if you would stand and do that as well. I think that it won't make your letter so long.
I won't go on and on and on and on.
Exactly, that people won't start fading out, they'll be asleep.
Yeah, I don't know.
Scott, there was some, because you wanted to make some more points.
No, I can do that tomorrow night, and I'm going to bring it up under something else, I can bring it up under something else later, another letter dealing with Cherahoe, and that legislation that we're going to be talking about, so I'll bring it up then, because it's relevant.
And I think it's a really good letter, I think it's nicely written, thank you.
I like the idea, the idea was very unique, so that's, it won't leave, keep the towns' hands tied so much. The really interesting thing is, Hopkins has a reputation of always questioning Cherahoe budgets, the big issue is what's Charleston going to do, and how they're going to respond. Obviously, Richmond might say something, but they're not really impacted by the Cherahoe budget like Charleston and Hopkins are, so it's going to be very.
Even last year, when, when Richmond got slammed, and they were the only town that got slammed, they never said a thing. We were there trying to get them to further cut the budget.
Yep.
That's Richmond, so, oh, well, anyway, we're consistent, and I guess Richmond is too, and that's their right.
The bigger question is, what type of leadership this council is going to do on the Cherahoe budget when it comes to be placed on the ballot. I was at the meeting, I know Counselor Capable was at a meeting at Cherahoe, I think it was their last regular meeting, and they had some staff positions, they didn't even want to talk, really seriously look at cutting, and I didn't have the list in front of me, but, so I would suspect that they're going to be very defensive of this budget, right?
Can I just clarify, they weren't talking about cutting those, they were talking about not signing the contract until after the budget was known. Those positions were important, and certainly, I don't think they would ever cut them, they just didn't, the gentleman, I always forget his name, and I apologize.
Zacciozza?
I don't remember, but he wanted them just to not sign the contract until after the budget was done, to give them as much flexibility as possible, but under no circumstance was anyone asking for them to cut those positions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, let's see, were there any changes?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
All right. So a motion was made to send, get the letter to them with the changes, but there didn't happen to be any, so that's fine. And there was a second?
A second.
It's already the second.
All right, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next one is the, the bill. And Frank gave us this, one of our workshops, I believe. And Frank gave us this, one of our workshops, I believe. All I did, I, I, it just didn't happen. I had hoped to suggest a response and then have you guys add in that we wanted to take on this. And I just couldn't, I wrote a lot and I basically just had a lot of thoughts together, but I didn't get it done. So, what we could do tonight is just see how you want to proceed on this.
What page is it on? Because I didn't read it.
It's in reports.
It's in reports.
Yes, in reports. So, why don't we just go around and, and start commenting on it? And then I'll, I'll, we'll all make notes. Frank, you want to start?
Yeah, yeah. I actually, when I heard about that from Cynthia Drummond, I got a copy of the bill online. And I had called Pat to find out what, what kind of those, I was kind of excited actually about it and its content. And I said, you know, geez, what can we do as a town to maybe lobby for this particular bill? You know, I don't know if it's in committee, has been out of committee or what. So, she had suggested that I contact Dan Beardsley at the Trust.
No, the League of Cities and Towns.
I'm sorry. League of Cities and Towns, I'm sorry, which, which I've done. And I, I called him and I said, you know, I'm just wondering what your stance is on this particular bill. He had no idea what, what it was. So, I kind of caught him off guard. Anyway, I said, you know, it's something that's very important to at least our town and I'm sure others, and maybe you can look into it. So, he assured me he would, whether he is or not, who knows. But I also know the sponsor, which is Tassoni, and some of this is Tassoni, and I was going to reach out to him to find out exactly where it stands, assuming it's in committee and I don't know where else other than that. So, that's kind of what I was going to do this week and reach out to him. But I think, and, and its content, I think it's pretty neat. It takes the control financially, at least away from the school committees, which is something I think would help us out. But, you know, again, I'm not so sure. I think this, maybe talking to Pat, I think you referred that it's been, this is bill has been resurrected several times.
This, this kind of stuff comes up all the time.
All the time. It's never passed. So, I'm just a hopeful, optimist, optimist. Hopefully, maybe we'll have some traction on it.
Well, you know, you're right. And, and it'll, it's going to generate interest throughout the area.
Right.
And, and it's good for the, for the sponsors here to, to receive information from us and tell them, maybe it's got a little problem because we're a regional district, but that we support it for the following reasons, and let them know.
Right.
You know, so, Barbara?
I thought, I thought it was excellent, too, the relating to education, because it really brings, it leaves the power with the school to handle their, their teachers, their curriculum, everything that they do as a school. But it gives to the towns the ability to determine the budget for the outside of the building and the overall pattern of taxation for the property owners. I think it's absolutely excellent. And, and, you know, Pat is right. It is always voted down. But this year, with the pension changes that involve the teachers as well, the teachers' unions as well, up at the State House, I think it's really a great time to bring it back up, let people talk about it more. And, and, you know, you're also right that it's, it's not perfect for regional systems. It's a little more difficult, I think. But overall, this is just excellent. And it really does leave the school, running of the school to the school. But the running of the budget on the outside forces and how we make sure things are maintained leaves that with the towns.
Who runs it, write the check?
Exactly. And, and I think, and we also have to bill our citizens. We are the ones that are billing the taxpayers. I thought it was excellent. And anything we can do to at least continue to bring this up, I think would be helpful.
Tom?
I read it a number of times. I believe in the concept that it promotes. The question I kept coming back to is how would we implement this on a regional school district? Who would be the chief financial officer? Would it be the three finance directors? Would we run into the same issues we have as the school committee now? I just, I saw a lot of issues with it. I would prefer not to vote and do anything with this at this time until we find out what Charleston's going to do. Richmond has already said no to it. I don't want to end up with a letter like we had last time and from the tri-town and then the other two towns changed it and didn't like this, didn't like that, and then we got hung up to dry. I don't want to do that again. I'd rather wait and let's see what the other two towns are going to do with it and then.
What if they make no, no position?
Right. Let's, let him go and I want to send it over to Scott.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, at some point in time, we need to know where, where the bill is. And if it's getting close, then we can, we can jump on board and push, push for it.
That's it?
That's it.
Scott, do you have any comment?
I, I'd vote against it. I, I agree with Barbara on the mechanical, I mean, on this philosophical situation. The problem is mechanically, we've had regional school districts for over half a century in this state. And it shows you, this is a classic example of how the legislature passes bills and they don't think them out. I believe that, number one, they hold cities and towns of caps. And in like a single school district like Wesley, they do control the bottom line of the school budget. We don't have that power in a regional school district. And I, if you count, I think that regional school districts mention three times in the bill, but specifically, it doesn't address how the local officials in a regional school district have any power over the school budget, bottom line. Because I understand illegally what has happened is that they go back to the voters. If you come up with a mechanical way that towns and regional school districts can address that, then you, then you filled in a gap. But that's a very significant gap for us, because they don't go out and say, I found it interesting, if you read the bill, it mentions the Central Falls School District. It doesn't go out and say, regional school districts, the town councils shall collectively decide on the school budget. It doesn't say that the three town councils, Charles, you know, of the Cherahoe district do that. And every financial officer is accountable to their respective towns. They're not accountable to the Cherahoe school district or any of the other school districts, regional school districts in the state of two towns. And I would want to see a, an answer how mechanically you would do that. If I was in a single school district, I could see myself supporting it. But you're asking me as an official in a regional school district to endorse something when there's nothing in the legislation that gives us the institutional prerogative of controlling the school budget. And yet, we already have seen that the State of Rhode Island imposes a budget cap on cities and towns who are impacted differently by their school budget. And Cherahoe is probably the best example in the state, because we're the only three town school district. That's all I'm going to say. But if you could deal with that issue, which is a very serious issue, then I'd probably be inclined to vote for it. But not now.
What I'd like to suggest is that with this bill in hand, and as Barbara mentioned, the, kind of the mood out there and the things that have changed, it's an opportunity for us to respond to why, to, to detail what the problems are and why we would support this. And then it's an opportunity to offer solutions, if we can come up with any. So, what I'd like to do is I'll continue to write, I'll, I'll put together, I'll finalize what I wrote and send it to you. And then we can have it on another agenda and we can add to it. Or we can also kick it to our treasurer, too, and, or to Bill and, and ask for staff input.
I'd like to see.
But, but I'd like to, I'd like to see us, you know, the way, the only way everything, anything's going to change down here is if we follow up on bills like this and let them know why it is we think it's great and what the problems are. I know it's not an easy, it's not going to work for regionals, but how could it? We have a, right now, we have the Cherahoe Finance Committee. It's made up of the public and it's made up of our three treasurers. And they don't, they don't, they're not even asked to make recommendations on, on the budget or go through the budget. I mean, there are mechanisms that it could work.
Oh, sure.
Not really, because you still.
Well, I disagree.
Well, I, I just, again, just, I wanted to at least put it out there for you guys to feel.
Oh, I think it's good.
You know, I, I'm not, you know, endorsing this thing wholeheartedly.
Of course.
I just, there were pockets of it that I was excited about taking the control away from Cherahoe, so we can control our seventy-five percent is really my main goal. But certainly, there's a lot of things that we can address. And Scott's got good points. Everybody's got good points. So, I think Sylvia, we just, yeah, we'll just play.
Kick it around.
Yeah, kick it around and see what we come up with.
I, you know, I, I think.
Got a question. All right. Go ahead, Barbara.
I'll send it off to you.
Right.
Because I, I think what Scott was talking about is if we don't have control over the bottom line, that's correct. And we would still not have control over part of the bottom line. We're trying to, in this bill, what they're trying to do is separate where the towns have some absolute control and where the schools have absolute control. And I agree that it's something we should continue to look at, but I don't think that we should ignore. I know they haven't solved all the regional district problems in this, but the concept and the philosophy where they're going is excellent, because they're leaving the care of the students and the teachers within the school, within the buildings, and they have that control. Our control comes from outside elements. And I think it's a very good split, so that we have some control. Because as a regional, we've always said, because we're regional, we have no control at all. This at least will begin to give us some physical control of the school ground. It may not give us control over the curricul, it doesn't and nor should it give us control over the, the curriculum or the teachers. But what it may do is give us some control over salaries. We can say, our towns aren't going up more than one percent, or they're all being held at a level rate, therefore, we would like the school to do the same. I, I mean, I think it gives us so much potential. And I do think we should move on, no matter what the other school districts are doing, Charleston or Richmond. I would disagree with you on that, Tom. I think that as Hopkinton, we really need to be proactive in this. Yes, it's not good and that's not finished, but it certainly is the right direction.
Scott?
Well, first of all, I think that, I'd like to have Pat looking around, because there's a legal dimension to this. And that, there's a legal dimension, and I think, if, and I, I've been interested in government, and I don't know how you make it work unless you have like a, let all town councils have control, but even then, each town is impacted differently. The other thing is, I'd like to know how it's impacted in other places. But I don't necessarily agree supporting this, because we're supposed to be politicians. And hopefully, we're good politicians. And my concern is that we have an obligation to have people, as long as their interests and needs are taken care of, it's okay. But they can not come up with a solution for regional school districts. And then when it comes down to caps and other things, the state mandates, hey, by the way, why didn't Hopkin stay within that cap? Because we had no control over our school budget. And what you're doing with that legislation, and if you support that politically, you're saying all these towns that aren't in regional school district, they can, they can have control, but the, the problems that the towns in regional school districts won't have a solution, and they're never having a solution. So, we have to demand, as regional school districts, a place at the table that if the people want to do things, they have to include our needs, our concerns, our worries, and how things impact us. So, I don't believe that we should make an endorsement unless our needs and concerns are addressed. What I did tonight, about five o'clock, I called Senator Maher and I, I couldn't get a hold of Senator Fogarty. And I like to talk to Senator Fogarty, because I know he comes from Gloucester. And Gloucester is in the Pontiacansett Regional School District. And I want to know why he sponsored it and talk about the regional angle. But I, I don't, I think that when we endorse things like this, we should always ask and protect Hopkin's interests, that basically what you're saying is, we're going to be helpful to all the other towns, but our needs aren't going to be met. And that's all I'm going to say on it. So.
Well, any other comments?
Well, I just think it needs to be tweaked, and, and to your point.
Of course.
So.
Okay.
All right. Just get done at the end of the day, having to say for the taxpayers as well, our budget's really great, but, you know, we're stuck with the hand that Cherahoe dealt us in taxes going up. That's all I'm saying. I think that, you know, taking the financial control away from them.
And being proactive, like, just being proactive, trying to work on this.
I don't think you're being proactive.
I will. All right. Well, anyway, we've got enough councils here that want to pursue this, so we'll work on it. We'll develop a response and we'll see where it goes. Okay. Let's see. Town managers' report.
Annual budget preparations. Just during the last couple of weeks, I've spent a considerable amount of time meeting with finance director Laura Kenyon and department heads, preparing the annual FY twelve, thirteen annual budget. Then attended several council budget workshops with the finance director to work on finalizing that budget, and that's an ongoing process. A CDBG grant, February 27th, I attended the bid opening for work for improvements on the Crandall House. This is a CDBD, CDBG project that was advertised through their office and Jeff Marshan. Only one bid was received in the amount of fifty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. And Jeff Marshan and Jim Laimfer are currently reviewing the bid. The project includes work on the chimney, front step, front and parking lot, walkways, the porch, the flooring, and the kitchen area. And we expect to have that work completed once it's approved, probably sometime during the fall, the summer or fall of this year. Vacant positions, the town is currently in the process of filling the vacant EMA director and tree warden positions. We plan to interview applicants for both positions sometime later, sometime later this month. Deadline date for the receipt of applications for the EMA director was March 2nd, and the deadline date for the tree warden, I believe, was March 12th. And lastly, hazardous mitigation grant. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock here in the town hall council chambers with several Rhode Island EMA representatives, Chief Dave Palmer, Tim Teft, Jim Laimfer and myself, to begin revising the town's proposed hazardous mitigation plan that needs to be approved by FEMA prior to the awarding of any FEMA grants. We currently have a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that FEMA has favorably, favorably reviewed. However, the grant cannot be awarded until an approved plan is in place. And grants are expected to be awarded later in the spring of this year. That's all I've got.
Any questions? Frank and then Barbara.
Yeah, Bill, I just have a quick question. For the grant, they stipulate that you have to have an EMA person on staff. I guess, I assume they would, right? For?
Not for the grant, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, interesting.
The grant just requires a town to have an approved hazardous mitigation plan in place.
Barbara?
I have two questions. One, just following up.
Do you think that it will be accomplished, so we won't lose that grant?
It will be accomplished, the question is, how long is it going to take?
All right, but will we lose the grant if it takes longer than the spring?
I know the grants are awarded in the spring, but I believe there's a 12 to 18-month period after that where you can, you can still obtain the money. I mean, that's just--
Okay, great.
The awarding of the grants that are ready to go at the time.
All right, so that sounds, and we're ready to go?
Absent the hazardous mitigation plan, we're ready to go.
Okay, that's great. And then, the second question is, what was the total amount on the CDBG grant for the work at the Crandall House?
It was actually $55,000, and the bids came in at 55,615, but there's some other money in prior year CBD, CDBG grants that are still in the budget on restricted accounts that we're able to use for the additional $615.
And that's planned on being done this year?
Well, it's--
As best you--
Yeah, we like to do it as soon as we can. I think it's scheduled to go before the Town Council, I'm not sure of the date, but--
That's great.
It's got to be approved by the Town Council.
And so, and so, there's a good chance that that, the Crandall House will get renovated this year?
That's the plan, yes, through the grant.
That's wonderful. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
New Business. You know, probably shouldn't have put that on the agenda yet, because we didn't get our list done--
They just got moved from that category up to Council President's, I think, and it just did not get deleted.
Yeah, so, but I don't know, we may have someone here that, are you here for that item? Are you here for the lights? Yeah, okay, yes, okay. We didn't, we didn't do our list yet. Of the people who called, we needed to put together a list, and I didn't even give you that list yet.
Well, I think, I think from the discussions at the last council meeting, I think the question really is, is how are we going to treat this issue, or how the council's going to treat this issue? And either they're going to honor the requests to have the streetlights reinstalled upon request of the residents, or whether they're going to honor the request to have them reinstalled based on a public safety need, or whether or not they're not going to have them reinstalled at all. There were 192 streetlights that were shadowed off. I had a meeting on February 28th with Paul Stuziak in my office, he's the representative in this area from National Grid, and to make a long story short, he said, basically, our savings are going to be approximately $15,000 a year, down from 20 because of the increases in the rate structure from National Grid. And I think in the last five or six weeks, I may have received one call from a resident to reinstall a streetlight. So, I think, perhaps, before we make any lists, the council might want to decide whether, in fact, they're going to reinstall those streetlights under certain conditions, or whether they're not going to do it.
And I think the list overall was about 25, I think it came up to about 25, because I know the ones that called me were duplicates, because they said they talked to you, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, why don't we start, I'll start at Scott's end. Have you given this some thought, and we also want to hear from the public, maybe we should do that first. Would you like to come up to the microphone and just let us know your name and address, and talk to us about the lights? Or whatever was on your mind in reference to this topic.
My name is Julia Scott Pelley, I live on 10 Brookdale Drive in this town. My question is, I'm not against, you know, taking the streetlights to save money, I mean, I'm all for that, but, in my case, is, they took the wrong lights out. There's, in a span of 350 feet, they have three lights on it. One is on the entrance of Brookdale Drive, one is in between Paul, I forgot his last name, and Mr. Wilcox, and then another one in the next lot. And they took the end, I'm on a dead-end street, there's a big turnaround in front of my house, and they took the one at the end of the street. I mean, you know, what we're saying sometimes is, oh, I see light at the end of the tunnel. Now, I see dark on the end of the road. I mean, you know, I'm not saying, you know, I want that light, because, but, you know, consider, why don't you take the one in the middle and leave the true end one? Who made the decision, I don't know, but to me, it doesn't make sense, because you have, like I said, three lights, one after the other. And then, at the end of the road, where everybody turns around, if somebody comes in and parks in a turnaround, and I won't be able to know. I talked to Ms. Thompson on the phone a couple of times, and you told me about the motion light, yes, I do the, I have a motion light, but they have to come up to, by the door before I get my motion light. I live all by myself, I was 77 last week, and, you know, I, you know, I lost two wives. We're neighbors with Mr. Buck, you know, we're corner, our backyard, you know, the corners, that, you know, we're in the same corner. So, it's something that, the lights was sort of accompanied to me, I mean, you know, live all by myself. Now, like I said, you know, if you restore one, you know, you have to restore one more, but they have to consider where and what. Some people choose to go leave in the woods, you know, and then you can't put lights, you know, three, four miles down in the woods for a couple of hours, you know. I understand that, I agree with that, but when you got used, I come 4,000 miles away from the orchard tree, and I grew up without lights when I was young. I came here to America, and I thought I might foot, you know, when I stand, I was fine, but it seems like I have to find my footprints back, you know, because it's, you know, it's just, you know, I understand that, it's not, I've been understanding, it's not the only town, they all have the same problem, you know, the cities, you don't get the fund from the government, from the federal government, you know, you know, my tax goes up, just like everybody else, and it's hard to make ends meet also, too, because I'm, you know, one pension, and I'm forced to sell the property because I can afford it. But for the time that I'm going to be there, I would like to have the lights, you know, consider it be restored, and take the middle one out, and, you know, have the, you know, the true end lights on our street. The street that's only 500 feet long, you know. So, that's all I can say, I mean, you know, so not that, like I said, I might sell a house in a year or two, and somebody else is going to get the benefit, but for the time being, I would like to see, you know, that on, you know, so.
Thank you.
That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Did you start your garden yet?
Uh, pretty soon. I saw you working it.
Yeah, the other day.
Scott, you want to start? Do you have any thoughts on this?
I want to get in contact with the two guys that called me, and actually, one guy came into the library to look for me. I can intelligently discuss the ones, the only thing I was thinking about, we talked about when we were putting a budget together, is should we have an extra item where we let people decide whether they want to go through the cost of the $20,000? I think it was $20,000 to bring the lights back, or, because people have to know that if we want to keep taxes in check, there are sacrifices that people have to make. And I know lights are very important to people, and I'm sure we will find that out recently. But if you want to keep taxes in check, you have to take lights, take lights out, and I know it's a very interesting subject, as simple as it sounds, and I'm just interested in how the other councils, that I, we should probably promote it more, and know exactly what lights we're thinking about, or if we're going to just let the people vote on the $20,000 amount, and just return all of them, and just let people have that option of voting if that's how they're so inclined.
Scott, I wanted to let you know a couple of things. The manager said the, in the end, it's going to be $15,000 because the rates are going up. So, the cost for the 192 lights that were turned off are $15,000 in savings. The other thing is, we knew which lights went out because we then, I don't know if you saw it, but we've been getting, or did get, a listing of every single light. The other thing, the last thing, was the town manager, I think, boiled it right down into a simple, two things, and that's the philosophy, either, if you have a philosophy that these lights are going to stay off because they're going to stay off, well, maybe there are three parts to it, but, or the lights are going to be turned on for anybody who requests it, was another idea, or they're going to be turned on for people who request it if there's a safety issue. So far, whenever there was a safety issue, which was in two instances so far, when it was a documented safety issue, it was a mistake, those lights, those two lights went back on. The, what's before you tonight is, there are about 25 people that have called to ask to have their lights put on, back on, just because they want them back on, for all sorts of reasons, but it wasn't safety, it was because they liked the lights back. Here's an instance where a gentleman is presented a little different in saying, why, there were three lights, why didn't you take the middle one, because I'm on the end? So, that's a little different, but--
Good question.
So, which is, actually, our philosophy, I thought, was, whenever they saw a ring, when they saw a lot of lights, they just, rather than take them all out, it was kind of every other one, but this one happened to be three. So, that's something that is kind of separate, but we're looking for an idea of where you fall--
Did we get a list?
On the three, yes, on the three philosophies, so, why don't you have at it, Tom?
I'm definitely up in the air on this. If we put all these lights back on, you've got to realize that now, your budget's going to go from a minus 15 to a plus 25. So, it's going to increase overall $45,000. I had brought the shutting the lights off a long time ago, years ago, when we finally, with Bill and this council, finally pushed to find other ways. In this, this is my sixth budget I've gone through, and we have nickel and dimed this thing, and cut it down, cut it down, cut it down, we've cut police, we've cut DPW workers, we've cut rec department personnel. We're just at, what's end is to where else, or I'm at what's end, where else to cut in our budget to keep our taxes as low as we possibly can. We have albatross on our backs that we have no control over. So, I'm more interested in setting up some kind of criteria or a checklist as to, how do we turn the lights on? If somebody requests it, let's set up a criteria of 1 through 10. These are, do you fit into these criteria? Is it a, anything over 50%, you can get that light turned on, using the safety end of the street, dead-end street? I mean, there are a number of things you can do. I'm more interested in trying to create the reason why we turn them on, other than the complete safety hazard. I mean, that's, like, so obviously, there was two of them that we had to change. So, I would rather work on that aspect of it, and this way, here, it would help future councils also, when this subject comes up.
I'd like to see the criteria for new, brandy-brandy new, if ever anyone out there has never had a light, and they want a light, to have very strict criteria, like, it's got to be a safety issue, period. I mean, that's what I'd like to see as criteria. If it's not a safety issue, they don't get a new light, period. If a new street is in a development, and it's the end of the street, and you're going to go out, I think it's a no-brainer, that's a safety issue, okay? So, that's what I'd like to see the criteria for new ones. As far as the only 25 or less people that have called, they did not have a safety issue, which is, I want my light back, I'd like to see them get their light back. It's not everybody, it's just 25, at the maximum, 25 out of 192. We're not getting any more calls, you got one, I got one, it was probably the same person. So, it's still around 25, and, you know, so, anyway, that's where I sit. I'd like to see the people that want their light back, for the variety of reasons, have it back, just because I saw it, whatever the reason was, and, but, when, but if there's a safety issue that is found out there, that would be a no-brainer, that should--
But I believe that when--
So, so, we'll, so that's where I stand. Barbara?
Thank you. I am specifically for replacing it if it's public safety. I think that's the primary goal. I think that, and I think that's going forward, as Sylvia has requested, is going forward, new lights should be public safety issues only, although I do believe there should be a stricter criteria, because Tim Teft goes out to take a look at this, and public works need some criteria from us, so that he can say, this is a useful light to add. However, in the ones that have been requested, the 24, 25 or so, once the list is made, I think each of those, because they've had them before, should be looked at again. I think that's only 25, there's at least five of us, we can split it up, and each of us look at five applications, and see where the problem is, or where the need is. And if it's a need, or if it's an unusual occurrence, like two on, one off, on the dead-end street, instead of one and three, taking two out, I think that we should be able to look at each of these individually and make that decision. I don't think it should be across the board, the 25, because as soon as you get the 25, the next 25 are going to come in, if they know that you do it, no matter what. I think we should look at them individually, and specifically with public safety in mind, I think that's the primary concern. But also, to see if, if there is other reasons, I think the gentleman just mentioned an entirely different one, which is also very valid, and not incorrect, we're basically taking the second pole and moving it to the third, you're not even truly adding a light, you are simply moving one down in a longer location, which, by the way, is exactly what we did on Gray Lane when we did High Tech. We put one at the beginning, and we skipped what would normally have happened, and went to a longer detail. So, I think we have even done that before, as, we've done that in earlier instances. So, I don't think people should just get them back, I think it should be looked at individually, and I think all five of us can take five people, and five citizens, and really look at it, see where their problems are, and make a recommendation to the council.
Just so you know, what you recommended, Bill's been doing--
I'm sure he, I know he has, because two of them that you put back were two people that I talked to and recommended, because it was a public safety issue.
Yep. I got two calls, and I think it's a duplicate to maybe Tom and Bill got. I went out to both sites, they seemed valid, and I think those are, and the works are getting turned back on. I'm not in favor of turning them all on, but I think we have to look at each of the 25 and see if they're valid enough, and us, as a council, make the decisions on those, and I don't think that would be a tremendous dent in the savings, putting those particular ones back on. So, I would, I would agree with Barbara, and I also agree that we should have some kind of criteria, too, written, so that we know going forward what to do when this comes up again. But I also, when I went to the site on North Road, there were, one in particular that wanted to be put on, and I talked to a neighbor down the street more, and he said, why didn't you take mine? I don't need mine. So, it was a perfect case, there was two of them right in front of him, and a huge black area, and this one woman needed one, so, you know, to his point, it's happened, so, whether it's, I know it's not on purpose, but I just think we need to look at the case, case by case, on these 25 people, and see if they're valid enough, and make decisions on those individually. I think we can do it pretty quickly, so.
Well, see, I mean, I listen to their reasons, because they've always had it, and because--
Oh, okay. I only get two calls, so.
Because it was the view, it's been there for 25 years, and I get to see, every night, we would always be able to see, it was a, it was like a picture frame in their house, they always looked at this picture, and now they look out the window, and it's dark. I mean, those are the sorts of reasons, okay?
But they can put a light on their house, and see--
So, I need, of course, I recommended, I don't believe it belongs to any of us, because if it comes to me, I'm going to say, okay, those five can have it. Now, what criteria? So, I believe that it belongs with the manager. Anybody who calls, it gets referred to him, and it gets looked at by him, it gets looked at, usually, the council looks at it, too, and then the police department, if it follows up on it, it might be a safety issue. So, I don't think it belongs with us, because that, then it becomes political, and far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see the 25 get it back, so.
I just have a couple of comments. I agree with the president, and I don't think it's a council thing, I think it's really a town manager, police department thing, it's a, it's probably a managerial function as far as determining, based on the council's policy, which light should be on and which light should be off. But one concern I do have is that, I understand the differentiation between, you know, new lights, ones that haven't gone on yet, up yet, and the 192 that were removed. Of the 192 that were removed, we have maybe 20 or 25 people who complained about it, but, you know, there's another 170 people who had their lights removed who did not complain. Now, if you're going to allow the 25 people to have their lights reinstalled, the other people who are going to start calling, also wanting their lights reinstalled, and it's not going to be like a new light being put up, because they're really in the same boat as the 25 people, it's the fact that they just haven't complained yet.
Right.
So.
What do you want me to do to the people that I, I want to call these people back?
Have them speak to--
Let's make a decision first as to what we're going to do.
I think, I think you've got one, so, I was the only one who lets turn on the 25 lights, or whoever calls back, wants it back, and so, there's your decision.
Yeah, I was--
Is there something else I--
I am terribly happy to have it go back to the town manager--
It needs to go to the manager.
And you can take a look at it. You'll look at each of them individually and make a decision.
All right, I think you have, then, as it's coming--
Yeah, the, I only used one criterion, and that was a public safety issue.
Yeah, because that was our criteria in the very beginning, yeah.
Bill, can I get a list of those 25 people, and where those lights are?
I don't think we have one. I think that it's going to be, it may fall short of that, because, like, I might have 10 names of people that called, and then, for a while there, at the president's request, I was forwarding those--
I was forwarding those calls over to her. So I didn't keep those names.
I've got, yeah, I've got, I've got names.
I think between all five council members and myself, there's probably about 25, be my guess.
I know mine were basically duplicates, people that called.
Anybody that calls, write it down and-
Yes.
Put it in an email and send it to Bill. Name, address, and if you've got more than that, or you've only got a name and a phone number, whatever you have, write it down, put it in an email, and send it to Bill, and he'll put it all, all together on one list.
I can even extend that criterion to, like, public safety issues or other extenuating circumstances. So it kind of gives us a little bit of a wiggle room if, if that's what you wish.
I have a question, I have a, it's sort of a comment question. The other thing to check when people call about not having a light is to make sure it isn't blown out.
They've told us.
Well, no, I, I know that-
It's not a problem, because these were removed.
That's right.
There is no light, there's no stanchion, there's no, nothing there.
Then they've told us it's removed.
You couldn't tell by looking at the pole whether or not there was ever a light there.
Yeah.
So my concern is that someone may think because the light is out that it was removed, although it wasn't physically removed.
They called us and told us it was, they said, it's not only out. I thought it just was out. It's gone. And I said, that's right, it's physically removed. She said, yes. So that every single person that called me was surprised and told me that. And I said, yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay.
How are we going to leave this?
Give it to the manager.
To, yes, with the manager, and whoever is called, put the information together and send it off to Bill so he'll have a master list.
Can you, can you give us an update on just how many people and what you think you've accomplished?
Sure, I can, maybe the next council meeting?
Yeah, or the next, or the one after, because you obviously have things to do, I don't mean in two weeks, but maybe even in a month, to say, you know, this person, these people, we did replace it, these we did not.
Sure. I'd be more than glad to do that, and it takes National Grid anywhere between 30 and 45 days to reinstall those lights.
Sure, but if we can just have an update at some point?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is, should, it's discussed and set a workshop date, but it's, what I would like to hear from you is, you've seen the recommendation, and I don't think we need a workshop.
No, I don't think so.
We just need to schedule, I think, schedule it for a repeal. And how does, how do, I asked you once before, ordinances if you want to repeal it, and we want to set a hearing date to repeal it? How is that done?
You pass an ordinance that says that-
The following.
Section such and such is hereby repealed.
And when you advertise it, do you have a, you must have what, the title of what it is, or how much information do you put together?
They still be able to put something else as this-
Relates to?
Yeah, whether they're going to repeal. Paul, it would just, I mean, it would just say what it is. This ordinance would repeal section such and such.
Article 2, Division 7. Highway Commission.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. All right.
So it'd be a simple act.
I do, I do have a question, this, and I should know this, I was on a charter revision commission. Does the town charter require that commission?
No.
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 I think it's a great idea.
No, I just asked it.
I know, but I'm-
Right, he wanted to know, but it doesn't.
I know, but I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea. Because you didn't ask whether we actually like it to be repealed or not.
Yeah, it's just set a hearing date-
Mm-hmm.
-to have it repealed. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Then we'll do that. Lisa, you got a suggestion, the second, let's see, the first meeting in April, does that give you time? Is the first meeting in April okay?
Yes.
All right.
April 2nd.
Yeah, I meant, yeah, April 2nd, right. Perfect. Yeah, we would want to-
I'm glad we're getting that.
Yeah, perfect. That's great. Get it done.
If possible, now that we're on commissions, that Lisa could provide us with a list of commissions that are required by law, that we have to have, like, boards and commissions. And that we have to have a board of canvases, and that we have to have a board of actors.
And you need it because?
No, I just think it's important, because we have a lot of commissions that are dormant in which ones are required and which ones are optional.
But why would you need her to go through that exercise?
I just thought it was a good thing, now that we're talking about the Highway Commission, because that's been pretty dormant through the years. That's the only reason I brought it up.
All you have to do is, you can look at them. I just hate to see you require staff to do those things, you know?
Just forget the legal. And this certainly a good idea.
No, it is a good idea to look at, at boards and commissions and decide what we do or don't need, which is why this one is, we don't need.
We'll be doing that during the charter too.
Yeah. Okay.